Thank you very much. This has been an eventful couple of weeks where we've seen the flag be raised a lot on TV at the Olympics, which has been really fun and inspiring to watch, actually. And it's really awesome to see that flag go up and hear the anthem and be proud of our country. I would like to mention, too, I don't know, I wasn't able to catch it because I was traveling, but until late last night. But I don't know if anybody was able to catch Shari Hawkins, our hometown girl's performance. Has anybody heard anything about that?
She starts tomorrow.
Is that tomorrow? Oh, Thursday, that's right. Yeah, that's right. It's 2:00 this this
2:00 tonight.
Tonight or tomorrow morning. Yeah, so we could have a watch party if you're all inclined. Meet here at 2:00 in the morning and watch it. Maybe from the comfort of your living room couches or beds or something.
We'll just get the highlights.
Yeah. Hopefully, anyway, we'd like to wish her well. She's our probably, I don't know, as far as I know, the only Rexburg native that's been in the Olympics. Stephen, do you know of any others that have been in the Olympics from Rexburg?
I don't think so.
We, I, I'm thinking you might remember back to the early 1900s or the late 1800s.
Is this the 50th Olympiad, 200 years worth? Yeah, I don't remember any.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and get started with our roll call of council members. Mary, would you do that for us, please?
Yes. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Colin Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Eric Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Reeser.
Here.
Councilmember, Council President Walker.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that we've got everybody here tonight. That's great. Okay. Item number three on the agenda is a time for public comment. This is for things that are not on the agenda. If anyone likes, what would like to make us aware of anything, we ask you to limit it to three minutes. And if there's anyone, please come up to the podium and state your name and address and let us know what you'd like to hear. Is there anyone that would like to make any comments? All the crowd here, is there any, anyone, anyone back here? No? Okay. Anyone online?
No mayor.
No online. Okay. All right. We will move on then to item number four, which is a public hearing, presentation of the fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. That will be ordinance number 1300, fiscal year 2024 budget appropriation. This will be designated as ordinance number 1319 and considered first read if the motion passes. So we'll go ahead and turn the time over to Mr. Matt Nielsen, our CFO, for that presentation.
All right. This will be pretty quick. We kind of went through this last time, but basically with all the amendments that we made throughout the year, we're reducing the budget about $783,300 for a final budget of 8167, 700. So I don't have anything else unless there's questions.
Anybody, anybody have any questions for Matt? I know we've gone over the budget a lot throughout the spring and summer. There's any questions about it, about anything? If not, I would, we'll see, we gotta do a public hearing. So at this time, public hearing goes as follows. We will open the public hearing. We will ask for comments in favor of this ordinance and hear those. If there's none, we'll hear comments in the neutral position and then any comments in the opposition to this particular ordinance. And we have one, two, three, four public hearings on the docket. We will follow that same, same procedure for each one. So unless somebody new comes in, we won't explain that again. Before we move into public hearings, we just barely skipped over our time for public comment. And I noticed this couple back here just came in. Did you have anything that you wanted to make a public comment on? We just skipped over that just before you got here. So I didn't know if there was anything.
Well, can it be concerning anything or is it?
Well, it's things that are not on the agenda. If it's, if it's anything concerning a public hearing, then we'll have time for, to make comments during that.
Okay.
Okay. Is that good? Okay. Thank you. All right. So then we would declare this public hearing open for ordinance number 1319.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can we also join in and open a public hearing for the county as well? We're just having to have another hearing opened after your hearings.
Yeah, I was just looking at that. Do we have the, is one of these public hearings on here? I don't, I don't notice in the thing, is one of?
It's the third one down.
Yeah, third one down.
Item number six?
Yes. Will you open each one?
Oh.
Each item?
Yeah, we will. We will. Yeah, we will. So yeah, that number, number six would be the joint. Okay. Thank you. All right. So at this time, is there anyone who would like to make any comments in favor of ordinance number 1319? Hearing none, is there anyone who would like to comment in the neutral position? If none, is there anyone who would like to comment in opposition to ordinance number 1319? What's this stuff here? Okay. Budget amendments. All right. We will close that public hearing then, hearing no comments. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to move forward on ordinance number 1319.
Mr. Mayor, I should move that we approve ordinance number 1319 and consider it first read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. We will move forward with that item, ordinance number 1319. Item number five is a public hearing concerning our proposed fiscal year 2025 utility rate changes. This will be designated as resolution number 2024-09 if the motion passes. At this time, I would declare the public hearing for this item open. Is there anyone who would like to testify in favor of resolution number 2024-09? Hearing none, is there anyone who would like to testify in the neutral position? Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone who would like to testify in opposition to this resolution? All right, hearing none and seeing none, I will declare this public hearing closed. I would entertain a motion to move forward on resolution 2024-09.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 24, 2024-09 as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes. Item number six is a joint public hearing. This is concerning the fee changes at the golf course. And since the golf course is a jointly owned entity between Addison County and the city of Rexburg, we will declare this a joint public hearing. We do have our county commissioners here as well as our county clerk, Ms. Muir, and we want to recognize them here for this public hearing.
Mayor.
Yes.
Clarify, it's not just the golf course. It also includes the airport, which is a jointly owned property.
Oh, okay. Oh, these are, these are fee changes for all of our jointly owned or?
And, and just the cities. And the city stuff, too.
Okay.
It's all of our fees.
Oh, so we've got all the fees, including the jointly owned ones. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Now that we have that clear, I would, I would, is there any, there's not any presentation on this before we do the public hearing, or is there?
No. I mean, the only thing that I would say is we did, we did, since we talked last time, added one thing to the golf, and that is if we want to buy tables and chairs and just rent those from the course, we put an option for that. And then we have it on our agenda for our next golf board meeting to just discuss that. Possibly do, and Devers highlighted it there. But for the commissioners that are here, with the airport, it's really about a 10% increase on those three fees. Golf, the substantial thing, was, it was about a 5.5% on your daily play, but not all daily play. We didn't really change it for the youth too much. And then it was, I think, about 4.3% average for season pass holders. So just kind of gives you an idea.
Okay.
I had one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And was Rec okay with the, what we discussed with the Main Street Mile, the fee? Yeah. I know.
Yeah. I want to talk to both.
So can you go back just real quick on the golf? Let's see, we have, so we're at 1792 for nine holes, 1887 the weekend, and 1826, 8928, 77. And how much did we put the car rentals at?
We went up a quarter. So they end up being, I think, 850 if I remember right, tax.
Nine holes, 778 and, oh.
Are we eight now or eight and a quarter? You remember, Stephen? No. Oh, I guess it's right there. You can see it, 778 plus tax. Or 802 plus tax, sorry.
So if you're doing it in 18 holes, is it just twice that? Or what do we?
Yeah. So they charge it per nine holes.
Okay.
And it's per rider. So per rider.
Oh, per rider. Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure that was clear. Okay. Yes, Colin?
Mayor, I have one other thing. I just wanted to briefly bring up and talk about on the police, on our contract labor per officer. In looking at this and kind of looking at the school district and also the partnerships we have out there with like the hospital, the college, and also the school district, I'd like to put maybe wording in there, I could briefly talk to Matt about this, that we can meet with them and kind of work that out as we contract with them, like our officers at the games and so forth, where we use their gyms and everything else. I want this to give and take with the school district and other, others that we partnership with. So if we can maybe put a wording in there, the ones we partner with will go up some, but we'll work with them up to the $77. The ones that we haven't been, like the businesses or they, we contract the police out there for security of a concert or something, then that will be $77 because we don't partnership with them. So we can have a kind of give and take with the, with those ones.
You mean make it a little more flexible with the community partners?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As I understand, these fees, these are maximum fees that we can charge, correct?
Correct.
So there could be any negotiation with adopting this that would allow any negotiation at any fee less than these numbers, right?
Yeah.
If they so desire.
Yes, that is the case.
So like if you guys wanted to do a discount for community partners, you could choose to do that. Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what I'd like to see is those community partners that we work so closely with. I don't want this to turn into, we're raising our fees up and then all of a sudden they start charging us and raising their fees up for the gyms and everything else. And it starts being a battle back and forth. We need to have a partnership.
Yeah, well, our parks department does, they, they meet with them every year and kind of negotiate that, that out. And so I think, I think we're kind of already doing that, but.
But this is strictly like, I'm looking at the police with the, because it's a lot more than just having security there at the games and that. The police officers deal with a big time building the relationship with the students. And it's not just security. That's just one part of it. And I just want to make sure we give that to the school district, one, that we can work with them and not just come in and say, okay, it's going to be 77 bucks for these officers. And then all of a sudden, we push ourselves out of those venues, you know, and they say, we can only afford one or we can't afford any. I'd prefer working with them and prefer having them there than push them out. So that's why I just want to make sure we can negotiate with them and make it a community partnership. Because we work closely with some of these, like the college, like the school district, the hospital. And I don't want to.
Yeah, jeopardize that. Yeah. Okay. Well, duly noted. And we can, we can even put some notes in there to that effect that, you know, that we want to work well with the, with the school district as well as university and other community partners and make sure that we're all working well together and can afford each other, things like that.
And I think like, say, our supervisor over there, Chief, and Mr. Lord's, they can work this out and maybe come up with something as we do this.
It's probably important to just note that, you know, when you look at that rate, you're like, whoa, that's, that's a pretty high rate. But nine times out of 10, we're paying them time and a half when they do those. And so they're working their regular, and then they're doing that on like a weekend or an evening. We're paying them time and a half. And so keep that in mind.
Just a word of caution.
Yes.
If we were to put some general verbiage in here that, you know, there were some give and take between different entities within the city and county, we'd open ourselves up to all kinds of issues as far as negotiations on all of the fees, not just the, the police fees and others. So we got to be a little bit careful in being sure that we're not.
Put stuff in there that so the people.
Verbiage doesn't, doesn't extend to everything because it could, it'd just cause chaos.
And I totally agree with that. But I'm looking at the main partnerships that we have. Like I say, we're using their facilities a lot, all the gyms and everything else for this.
But we do pay for that, too. And we negotiate that every year.
Like I say, it's just a give and take on those partnerships, those one entities that we have a one-on-one partnership with. And that'd be the college, probably the hospital and.
School district, yeah. And the county.
From a legal perspective, it's probably best not to put any type of verbiage in there relative to that exchange. It's really what you're describing is a quid pro quo. We're still going to charge the 77, whatever Matt has on there. And in exchange for which they're going to give us $21 in cash and $55 in kind by use of their gyms. And that's how we've negotiated over the years, is we take into account what they're giving us, they're giving them. From an accounting perspective, we have to have a number on there that we can correlate back to the bodies that we're placing out there so that we don't get accused of discriminating against one organization as it relates to another.
Okay.
So we can accomplish what you need.
But point well taken. Councilmember Johnson, did you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to say, I, I do think it's important to remember the police. I mean, that's coming out of their budget and you do have to pay them a time and a half. So I don't think we can, you know.
Discount it too much.
Yeah, we can't discount it too much because it costs that much and that's a big service that they provide.
And that's my point. Matt does that bookkeeping. Parks may transfer part of that $77 over in exchange for the gym use that they're getting. But the police department, we have to know what.
Yeah.
As I look at these three, I don't want any of them to believe you're believing we're going to pay them $77 an hour. But we have to be able to put a number on the use of those bodies at those, those activities.
I was just briefly talking to Mr. Lord's about this. And I know they wanted to have a meeting back with Matt and Lieutenant Hershey and, and look at this. Because like I say, it's more than just having officer for security. This is a lot different entity than going out to Walmart and doing security or going to a concert and doing security. When we start dealing with the school district and being in those gyms, it's not just security. It's definitely the reporting of stuff we built with the officers back to the youth of the community. And that's, that's why I want to protect is, is that, whatever we may do that way.
All right. Well, duly noted. We appreciate that sentiment. Okay. Anything else? Anyone? Okay. At this point then, we would, can, we would declare this public hearing open for resolution number 2024-8. And I would entertain any.
Do you want to let the county open?
Yeah.
Well, I think we, yeah, go ahead. I mean, I think we could.
We joined up with the mayor at the very beginning. We declared our public hearing open as well in conjunction.
Okay. Great. We've got them both open. All right. Is there anyone who would like to testify in favor of this joint? Keep looking at this. There's a resolution ordinance. It's an ordinance on, or no, it's a resolution on this one. Yeah, 2024-08. Okay. Anyone who would like to testify in favor of this resolution? Anyone who would like to testify in the neutral position? If hearing none, is there anyone who would like to testify against this resolution? All right, hearing none, we will declare this public hearing closed. And I would entertain a motion to.
Move the closure.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Our hearing is officially closed and we'll let you do yours and then we will.
Okay. All right. On the city side of things, is there, is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-08?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 2024-08 concerning the proposed fee changes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Second by Council President, Councilmember Reeser. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes on the city account. I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Commissioner Menon Hall.
Do you have a discussion, Commissioner Parkins?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. We will approve the fees as represented for the job managers there.
And I will second that. The two of us, it passes unanimously. And we will be assigning resolutions and discussing further in our commission meeting on Monday. The important part is, is that we accept and receive the increases in the golf and the airport.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much. And I appreciate you being here to go through that with us. All right. Then that resolution passed from both entities. So we are finished with item number six. Item number seven is our staff report. And we'll start out with our finance report with Mr. Matt Nielsen.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, we, we would love to say.
Lots of exciting stuff to come.
Yes. We might be excused.
All right. We will excuse you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your attendance with us tonight.
Before I jump into the pickleball, I just wanted to ask one thing real quick. We've been put out to hire a replacement position for streets. And they did those interviews and they actually found two great candidates. They, they offered it to the one, they accepted it. But the question that we have is, in the budget for fiscal year 25, which wouldn't be third read until the next council meeting, so two weeks from now, there is a position, another position for streets, which would be effective in October. So the question that Public Works has and HR has, that they came and asked me, is, is it okay for us to offer the job to that second qualified candidate? Likely, they wouldn't start until the first of September, maybe, maybe first of the mid-September. So you would have a few weeks in this fiscal year that you would pay that individual. Or if you want, we can wait and see if they're still available in October. And so they just asked if I would run that past you and get your thoughts.
Any comments in council? Yeah, go ahead.
I would say go for it because it's hard to find qualified people.
That's what I figured you'd be okay with. So.
I mean, obviously, they feel like he's a qualified candidate.
Yeah. Yeah. They're, they felt really good about trying to get both of them. So.
Okay. Right. Then instruction from the council is to move forward with that.
Okay. All right. Okay. So I'm going to jump into the pickleball. As, as you know, we've been talking a lot about pickleball the last few years. So I'm just going to kind of run you through where, where we were, where we're at, and then kind of show you some of the options. And then we just want your direction on how you want us to proceed at this point. And so just kind of a recap, in this fiscal year, which ends at the end of September, we had $370,000 in the budget. That was coming from the general fund. And so, and that's, that's a pretty big deal because as we've mentioned in our budget meetings, we foresee our, our reserve and the general fund dropping. Even if we, even if we don't spend this 370, we're probably going to drop into that 25, 26% range, which our policy is to keep it at a minimum 25%. And so just keeping that in mind, just possible recession in future years, and then just the recent reductions that we've seen just in property tax, or sorry, sales tax. Finance staff would just recommend that you try not to spend the full 370 if it's possible. So we looked at other options to see if we could figure out if there's a way to do it cheaper. And then we would also recommend that we continue to apply for grants. So here, here's really the first option. This is kind of the optimal court, if you will. So we put out a four-court option that was with post-tension concrete and then an acrylic surface. Basically, they paint on the surface, right, on the concrete, fencing, lighting, everything. We put it out to bid. We, we received no bids, but we did go back and work with some of the contractors that had inquired about the RF, or the bids. And we did finally get one contractor to come back and say, I could do that for approximately $540,000. And so pretty significant cost, way over what we had budgeted. So we said, well, we're going to explore some other options. So the second option that we looked at is to just do a regular concrete surface. So we, we did get one bid. And there's, you know, you can do this many ways. We did get one person to bid it with a five inch with rebar on 24 inches on center. And then, of course, you'd paint that as well, add the fencing. Their bid did not include site prep or lighting. And it came back at about $266,000. So we believe that with the site prep added, and then depending on how fancy you want to go on the lights and whether you want to try to do it in-house versus hired out, you're probably somewhere between 310 to 350 is kind of where we think you could land if you wanted these, these four courts with acrylic. And this would be over by the baseball quad. So. Any questions on those two options? Okay. So then a third option that we've been looking at, and it's just, you know, it's something to consider. So we've, we've went and demoed and looked at two of these surfaces. So what it is, is they call it a, it's a synthetic modular court tile surface. I think people commonly call it sport court, right? There's, there's many different brands of this. And in recent years, they've kind of came out with a pickleball specific version of it. And so we've talked to two different vendors that have a pickleball specific surface that they basically come in little 10-inch tiles, if you will. And so this is kind of what it looks like. I'll just kind of show you this video real quick.
Drinking coffee every day didn't work for me. I couldn't figure out why until I went.
That was not part of the presentation. Okay. So here we go. So to, as I kind of get into this, if you guys really want to see these surfaces, we actually went to a private residence to see the one in Idaho Falls. But St. Anthony just put in a five-court complex. And they have it, if you want to go look at it. So.
They have all the crib, that tiles, those little tiles?
Yeah. It's this, yeah, they did, they did the one called Versa, Versatile. And that's what this is. And so, so anyways, you get the point of what the tile is. So let me kind of jump down. So what kind of made us started, starting to think about this is, we looked at the Smith Park tennis courts. If you've ever played tennis there, they're kind of the last choice for where you'd play tennis because of all the cracks. And it is a little uneven in some of the spots. That, that court is also the exact same size as the court that BYU Idaho just recently put into pickleball. So we kind of started looking at that. And we said, wow, they got six courts on there, you know, instead of four, they got six. So we went and looked at that. And then kind of what we're thinking is, you know, as an option, do we consider actually going in and, you know, doing some, we'd have to put a little bit of repair on some of the bigger spots that dip on the existing court. But you could go in and kind of float that. You could, you could seal those cracks. And then you could actually come in and just lay about 14,000 square feet of this tile on top of it. And you can design lines however you want. You can put logos on it. You really, they just design it and then they print it and they send it to you.
Would that be one continuous floor for all six courts or six floating?
So they'd all snap in together, all of them.
So there's enough mass, I guess, to keep it from shifting around? Or is there a way that they anchor it?
They do not anchor it. It just sits free floats, if you will.
Yeah, it really didn't. When we, we were testing out, playing on it.
Yeah, it really didn't, when we were testing out, playing on it, it didn't feel like it was moving at all.
Yeah, the one thing that we would recommend, and I'll kind of show you this in a second, is their court up at BYU Idaho is a little tight on the back lines. And so, we would recommend ripping off the south fence and adding about 10 to 12 feet of new asphalt, and then putting that fence back up, and extending, of course, the big fence around, right? We'd really want to kind of address some of the spots on that fence, too. It's a little beat up in a few spots.
And would, and would that make them full-sized, if we moved the fence?
Yeah, yeah, it'd give you, I'll just, in fact, I'll just show you if I can read it. Oi, moy. Yeah, maybe I can't read it. Let me, let me start the slide, so. Oh, no, it's beating. I can read it here. So, you know, you would have eight feet left to right, and then in the back court, actually can't read it. I think, didn't we decide that it was, didn't we decide it was 10 to 11, Stephen?
Yeah, we got it up there, it's 10 feet between the...
10 feet, eight inches.
No, 10 feet, six.
Or six inches.
Oh, yeah, there it is. I was looking right past it. So about 10 and a half feet, which we thought was enough. It would give you two or three more feet than what they have over there, so.
Does that estimate include the little fences in between?
Yeah, our estimate does include the fencing in between, so that, so you can see this, these are all fences.
Yeah.
Then you can see where the openings would be. We would actually put the openings in kind of the middle of the courts, because what we find is that the pickleball's just kind of gather in the corners. So there's no sense in leaving the corners open, because then they just run across. And so. But let me kind of go back, and then I'll show you that again. But let me explain the tile surface just a little better. So one of the vendors, which I think was a little more expensive than the other, they were saying a 15-year warranty and expect 20-plus years, kind of on those. And then, the one thing that you got to keep in mind is you could never do a professionally sanctioned tournament on that surface. But you could certainly do a tournament at a, just kind of a recreational level, if you will, like the ones we already do. But if you were...
I mean, never say never, right? I mean, it's possible someday that maybe they'll accept those, but right now, they don't.
Right.
Have we ever had a professional, we have ever had one here?
No. They're just for recreational.
Do we have courts that are...
We talked about it when we were making the presentation. Brigham City built theirs, and immediately, they then got sponsored for a national tournament. Salt Lake City built a 20-court complex, and... And now they, the year they opened it, they got a PPL tournament came there as a sponsored event. There's no guarantee that we could get one, and I think Matt's right. This will be more than enough for John's tournaments.
Recreational, yeah.
Do we have any courts that are quality enough for a professional tournament?
I don't think we have enough courts, would probably be the issue, don't you think? Because the ones we have are okay, aren't they?
To clarify, the hard surfaces, take Rix College, or, I'm sorry, BYU Idaho's...
You are dating yourself back to living.
I went and watched a young girl play golf today whose dad played basketball for Rix College. In my head. When they come in for those PPL tournaments, they bring their own surface, and they roll it out over your acrylic surface. They're very particular, and they won't roll it out over these plastic surfaces. So, right now, could we host a tournament? We have, we have four courts down there in the nature park, where they could roll their acrylic surface out and play professional-grade tournaments. I don't think you'd get them here for four courts. Like the mayor says, going forward, there may come a point where the PPL... These courts are approved and sanctioned by the U.S. Pickleball Association. That's why I don't push my button. But they're not sanctioned by the PPL, which is the group, or the APA, which are the two groups that host national tournaments.
Just a couple other things to note is, you know, one of the biggest concerns that we had with it is that, you know, somebody could potentially go snap them off and steal them, right? And so that's, that's something we would have to watch. We could put cameras up very easily there. We could even consider, similar to when you walk in City Hall, the magnetized door. You could actually shut it at a certain time, and then just have a push bar to get out. That's an option. I don't know that we need to go there, but we can watch that. And then when you order these, at least with the one vendor, she said they give you plenty of replacement tiles, because the other thing is, is metal. Like if somebody goes out there, they can definitely damage them with the right metal. And then, the other thing is water. So if it rains, or if you have a bad surface, so even the BYU I courts, the new ones, we went up and looked after a rainstorm, and there was puddles. And so I, so this is, the beauty of this is that the puddles are underneath the surface, and you can continue to play. You know, you might have to wait just a little bit for them to dry, but supposedly, you can just play. They said snow does not damage them. If you want to push the snow off, you can.
What about freezing?
The what?
What about freezing?
Yeah, they said no, they said it won't damage it.
Yeah, they claim freezing weather, snow is, they have a bunch of them.
The free-floating nature of them allows them to move with the frost, and so you don't have any damage.
Yeah, they said definitely, you know, the sun over time can show some fading. You know, you will have that. The one thing that they did say, both vendors said, is that it's much better on your joints than playing on concrete. They feel like you can go and play longer and not feel it as much. Whether that's true or not, I guess go try it. The other thing that I think that you should consider is, it is a little bit closer to dwelling units. It's about 90 feet closer. So if you take where the nature parks are to the back of those homes, the two houses that are just to the west of it are about 90 feet closer, but that's to the front of those homes, which typically, you don't have a bedroom on the front, but they may, I don't know. And then the other thing is, we do have a lot more trees around Smith Park, which would help with the noise, I think, and then also provide some shade, so. And you can just jump in with any questions. Here's the dimensions, yeah?
I'm assuming the surfaces that we would get are just the green that's up there?
No, we, I mean, we could...
Is that whole thing?
We could consider that, I mean, that's, that is not a, we could do it, but we were thinking the whole thing.
Because it doesn't have to be...
That is hard to hold in place.
Yeah.
We have to lock the whole piece down, so. Matt's bid includes the entirety of what you see inside the fence.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, that's better.
The colors would be set up for, specifically for pickleball.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. It would be hard not to lock them to, just because you, it's uneven. You're like, if you're playing, and you ran over and you hit that edge, it's probably not the greatest.
Yeah.
You'd want it all the same kind of surface height.
Plus, it'd make it easier, easier for people to steal them.
Yeah, that's true.
If they had edges exposed like that.
Yeah, okay, so let me talk about some costs that we think this would bring. So if we did this, we believe we could use the existing fencing with some repair, have to probably put up new on the south, where we rip it down and extend the asphalt. We would add fencing in between, so that would all be new. And we could look at options there. You could either just do the four-foot regular fencing that you see, or you could even consider netting options, if you wanted to go that route. Lighting is already there. We may need to add one on the south side, but we would probably just finish it and see, see how it works. And then, like I said, we'd probably need to do some repair work on the cracks in the surface, just before we lay it down, where the big, you know, if there's a big heave or a big hole, we might want to just kind of fill that up. So cost-wise, we think it'd be anywhere from $145 to $190, depending on the choice of tile. The one in St. Anthony, if we went with that choice, I think we'd be more in the $140 range, to be quite honest. And so you'd be looking, here's your costs, I kind of show those down here. But really, I think if, I think if we felt like the one in St. Anthony has a nice surface, I think you're below $150 to do the whole project.
I noticed on that Versa Court slide, it showed that they were offering a limited lifetime warranty. Do we know what that means? Did they say anything about that?
She did.
I was trying to remember what she said, and I couldn't...
She was going to look into...
Yeah, I don't think she said it yet.
Limited lifetime usually means lifetime of the, of the product, right?
Yeah, I didn't see it, she didn't send it to you, did she?
No.
Okay. Yeah, and we, and we would look at all that, we would get, honestly, we'd go get a bid from both, or maybe even more than two companies, and bring that all back.
So, these are, there are commercial courts out there that are, I mean, because it looks like this is kind of designed for like a backyard pickleball court.
This is the same manufacturer. We've already owned this product out of the zone, but that was specific to indoor recreational facilities. They just recently came out with the pickleball-specific ones. They put a little bit more grit on the surface to make it a little more conducive to pickleball jumping up instead of sliding. This is the same product they would use anywhere they put these down. It's a, it's a commercial grade.
Yeah, so there are commercial installations of this. I mean, St. Anthony, I guess, is one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they've, they've put them in in a lot of different places.
There's a, there's a three-court facility out in Thornton, where people play quite a bit of basketball and pickleball, and they park their vehicles on, and it's held up really well.
Yeah, they, they have about every, I don't know if it's an exact inch, but about every inch, it actually touches the ground. And so they've put better support under them. And so if you think about that, it doesn't have as many dead spots. Like the one at the Zone had a ton of dead spots. I mean, sometimes you'd be dribbling, and that ball would disappear. And so, but this, this one, in the, the tests that we have done, they've been pretty good. We even did kind of drop it on the concrete versus this surface, and it didn't look like it was much of a difference.
Yeah, it seemed, it seemed good. Yes.
Did you say, sorry, I just missed it. Did you say BYU Idaho has, this is what they have on there?
No, they did, they painted theirs. But they, but they also rebuilt, reconstructed their whole, you know, the, I think it's, is this concrete? I guess I...
I think theirs are the concrete.
Yeah, I think theirs was actually post-tension, wasn't it?
But they painted it with the acrylic.
Yeah.
Oh, that's...
They went in and cleaned it up. The same process we went through a few years ago with the tennis courts by the junior high, where we go in and clean them up, seal all the cracks, go over it with a cover, a leveler course, and then paint the acrylic over the top. Which is approximately the same price as the more expensive of these plastic. The cost of the paint, the acrylic, is about $10 a square foot to get it prepped and placed. And the more expensive of these two was about $10 a square foot. The less expensive of the two, the one they put up in St. Anthony...
Seven.
Is $7 a square foot.
And that's with labor installed.
Yeah. Well, I personally, I really, I really like the idea. I like the, I like the cost. I think that's fiscally responsible for us. I, I like the location. I have a little bit of issue, a little bit with the parking. The curb and the street along that, along the west side of Smith Park is terrible, you can't even, I mean, you can't park there. Most, most cars can't. Truck, pickup maybe could, because it is just a, it's a real deep, up against the curb, there's real deep.
Oh.
So you're saying like if you did like, like pulled into like, parallel park? Or, because right now, you just pull on the side?
Yeah, you just pull along the side, but...
If it's that bad, I mean, when we've gone over there for our grandkids' ballgames, we park there all the time, with cars.
Well, when we were over there looking at those courts a couple weeks ago, there, I mean, there's a section of, I don't know, probably 100 feet.
Yeah, the further south you get, the curb has rolled a little bit, which tends to make it more of a drop-off. It was on your five-year stiff a few years ago, but you moved it off because you were able to make it work with just resurfacing it around.
So I think parking might be an issue there, if you're going to, you've got six courts, and they'll be, I think they'll become busy.
They will.
You know, and I just think parking might be a little bit of a problem. But personally, I really like the idea. I think it, I like the idea of repurposing those courts.
It is, that is a good, a good point to bring up, though, because, you know, I mean, it's, look at Park Street Park, you know, we improved the park, and then all of a sudden, there's cars parked all over the place over there. And so, I mean, it could be an issue, but, I don't know. I mean, I guess people are going to get exercise, they might have to park over on the north side and walk a little ways, but sure. You know, and then maybe we'll have to look at that strip along there and see if we can do some improvements there.
It needs to be repaired anyways.
Yeah.
I like it, because we're getting six courts for Bay 2.
Instead of four.
Instead of four.
Yeah.
I think the pickleball community would be pretty happy about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're going to have some people that are like, "We should have done the solid surface courts," right? You're going to have some opinions on that. But for the recreational player, someone like me, that doesn't play this four times a year, it's not going to matter.
Did you have something?
Did we ask the pickleball people, like, I know you had been talking to them about thinking, "No, okay."
We have not on the last option.
Well, I still think that, I mean, I think our goal is for just residents to play. I mean, I'm not concerned about professional tournaments here. I just want a place where residents can go and play pickleball, so that's Smith Park, seems like a really good option.
I think that's our primary concern, right?
Yeah.
To be fair, the competitive, the highest-level competitive players in Rexburg don't want this. They, they don't like the plastic courts. But that's a, that's a smaller group. They are a group that helps out and coaches a lot of the others. But the typical person playing on our courts right now probably would rather have six more courts than worry about the quality of play on those courts.
Well, if they don't want to play on these courts, they can go over to the nature park and play.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll spread the play out over different courts.
Is it just because they don't like the surfaces and as nice?
The softer surface, if, when we brought them out to play on the courts out in Thornton, we had a lot of fun with them, and, you know, they were considerably better than we were. But their comment was, "If you guys come play on concrete, you're going to find out that you, you can play differently, just like we." It's, it's a, I've played hundreds of hours on these courts, and I didn't know that there was anything wrong with them until the really good players started telling me there was something wrong with them. And I will continue to play on the plastic courts.
So you think it's okay, then?
I think it's, I think it's fine, but I think you should be aware it will not be well-received by the, the couple of people that we have considered our pickleball consultants have expressed grave concerns, because they just, they just don't like the plastic courts.
So, just, I like the repurposing of this, you know, the tennis courts over there. We haven't, those have been just left there, we haven't been using them. That's a great thing to repurpose these. But the second part of this question is, this is not just one and done. We're still going to look at future of more pickleball courts, continue to go on this, look at grants for this game. I mean, it's going to get bigger and bigger, it seems like to me. So this is just one step to get more courts, and the next step to look at back to where we were before.
Yeah.
So I think that's what we're making more of this. This is six courts, and then we'll continue to go on this next avenue over there by the junior high, so.
Yeah, and one thing that we're going to do that I didn't mention is, we do want to pull the school district into a conversation about the existing tennis courts. Because what's happening there is, you got tennis players show up, and you got pickleball players playing on the tennis, with the tennis nets. And then you'll have some that play on one side of one tennis court, and then on another side of another tennis court. And so we just need to have some rules that just consolidates them onto the two people, two pickleball in one court. Don't let them use the tennis courts, or give priority to tennis players. And so I think if you did that, it could help. And then, a lot of that crowd could even transition over here.
So, what are your, I guess, to sum this up, what direction would the council like us to pursue? Do you want us to go more this direction, toward the Smith Park idea? Or what are your...
I think so, I think it makes sense. Repurpose those courts.
Is that a consensus?
And give us six instead of four, and then we can move on. Like Colin said, we move on, and someday, maybe get the others.
Well, that's, yeah, go ahead.
What would the timeline be? Like, would it be able to be completed before October, or?
Uh, I mean, possibly. We would just need to, to jump on it pretty quick.
Depends on probably how quick we could get somebody to come in and do the, the repair stuff. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it would be nice if we could do it quick because, you know, we have been promising pickleball courts.
Yeah.
If I got on the council, so.
What, what we would do, if you guys wanna go that direction, we would reach out to the two vendors that we've been working with. They would come and walk the facility and we would just basically say, design it and get it back to us as quick as you can and with, and we'll get all that information for you.
And then, and, you know, we'll, we'll go that direction and, you know, even then, it's not a totally done deal until we sign a contract. So if, if for some reason we decide to change our minds, I guess we, we still can until, until we sign a contract, so. But we'll try to get as much information as we can. Yes, Mr. Zenger.
Maybe figuring out the asphalt.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's the end of existing contract and get one of our current, uh, general contractors to go over and do, take the fence down and add the 12 feet. If we, if we don't jump on our existing contract, we probably don't get anybody who will bid asphalt for us this late in the season.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'd have to get that done pretty quick, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll jump right on it. Okay, that's the direction we will pursue according to council direction. Okay.
It says action item. Do we have to do? No?
Sorry, what?
Oh, it just said action item, but do we not have to?
I think-
That's good enough.
No, because we'll, we'll have to bring you back.
Yeah.
The choice is, right?
Yeah, I, I think I guess the action item would be really just, I don't think it's an action item. It's just an informational item and, and direction from the council is to pursue this option and bring back more information. So that's what we'll do. Okay, at this point in time, we will move forward with item number eight, which is the mayor's business. Item number A is to ratify the Parks Recreation Committee members that have been contacted. We have, oh, he left, I guess. Must've got tired of waiting. The gentleman sitting over there along the wall was Eric Erickson, not the one that, that is sitting here, but a different Eric Erickson. And Eric Isaacson and Mark Nigren. I've contacted all three of these gentlemen and they have all expressed a willingness to help with that committee and, and to help with some of the projects and things that we have. And so unless there's any opposition, I would entertain a motion to ratify these three gentlemen to our Parks Recreation Committee.
Mr. Mayor. I would move that we ratify the appointment of these individuals to the Parks Recreation Committee.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing done? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will notify them that they are ratified and we will let John, uh, just so, just for information, John Lewis has agreed to be our, um, parks, I mean, our committee liaison to that group and he will set up the, the committee meeting times and, and notify, Where you put out a bunch of dates and times and let people mark off the dates are available and then you can come up with the time that's best for everybody. you know, the council members that are over that as to those times. And we also are, we can, we can, we can consider a couple of more members. We probably don't wanna get it too big, but I think if we had had five or six, we'd probably be okay. But I don't remember what that's called, but, but that seems to be a pretty effective way to, to set those up. So we'll go that direction with that. Okay, thank you. That item passes. Maybe seven at the most. So if you've got any others.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Isn't this a combined parks, recreation and trails committee?
Item, let's see, just a couple, the other item, I've got actually two, three other items. Yes, it is.
So we probably oughta-
One, we have our Footloose Play coming up on Friday and Saturday night and so that should be something really good. And trails.
Make that-
Make that note on there. Yeah.
And John Lewis knows it's Councilmember Erickson and I both, right? That will, should be notified when he plans those.
So if you've got a, a free evening either Friday or Saturday night, I would encourage you to attend that and see, see how that goes. Member Erickson and you, right? Yeah, yeah, we will. Yeah, I'll make a note of that just, just to make sure. See what our cultural arts department has been up to. And item number, the other quick mention item is that we got, we made some improvements over at the dog park. And, uh, let's see, I thought there was one more thing about that that I was gonna say. We got the water fountain working and we put some cedar ties around the big muddy area right at the entrance and we brought in a bunch of wood chips and put it in there. Oh, uh, you know, and then we'll try to pull Greg into that meeting as often as we think it's really necessary to And that, I think that'll be better. There's probably still some other improvements. We wanna plant a few trees over there and do some other things as well. so that we can have input from the parks, either Greg or Bob, from the Parks Department as well.
We, we did discuss the possibility of having that kind of initial meeting in the first part of September.
So there's, there's more to come there. But, but they're definitely an improvement over the way it was.
So I think that's the timeframe they're trying, they're kinda working around.
Okay, the other item is, I don't know if any of you have noticed that I wanted to, I wanted to bring up our freeway interchange Yeah.
And are they gonna, are they planning the evening so that everyone can?
I-
and we've had a little bit of, um, comment about the color that they painted the freeway. So I drove down to the, and the ITD guys, unfortunately, they said it will cost about $50,000 to, because this is a graffiti resistant paint and it has to be sandblasted off. You can't just paint over it or else it won't stick because it's graffiti resistant. So in order to change it, they have to sandblast it off and then repaint it. And probably even more than the, I mean, $50,000 is a lot of money, but even more concerning than that is they, they claim it will delay the project by two to three weeks, which is not good. But I went down, they said that, they said, well, why don't you go down and take a look at the Fort Hall and the North Pocatello or North Chubbick, whatever that interchange is, that new one that they put in. What's that called, Robert? Just the north interchange?
Northgate.
Northgate, yeah, Northgate Parkway. So, so these are some pictures that I took this afternoon and unfortunately, as we get into a more, the dark ones, you can't really see the color that well. But this is the same color that they use down there. Okay, now you can see that better. See, this is the Fort Hall one. That one's fairly new, newly done. It's kinda shiny and, and it, it's kind of a goldy mustardy color that we've gotten a lot of comments about that people aren't too crazy about it.
Are they gonna be putting some kind of a artistic motif there in those, C2 big square or a big square on each?
Oh, yeah, in those big squares is where our logo and our, it'll say, well, it'll say City of Rexburg, America's Family Community with our logo in those squares. So that'll look nice. And, but we've gotten a lot of comment about the color and-
What color is it? I don't-
It's kind of a mustardy yellow color. You can sit there.
Oh.
It's baby diaper yellow.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of the comment we've gotten is it looks like baby diaper material.
Do they have markers of graffiti resistant paint?
Well, I'm, I don't know. They used it on these two and I guess somebody thought it looked nice. I'm not sure who. But they sent, in, in the documents that they sent our Public Works Department, they have a little color swatch and they have the color code like A dash 361, whatever, and a little color swatch that's about this big. So you look at it and it looks kinda tannish. So yeah, so we're thinking, okay, that's probably okay. And then I, I guess I'm a little concerned that they didn't say before they painted it, hey, this is the color down at Fort Hall and Pocatello. What do you guys think of that? And that seemed like that would have been a good thing to say before they painted the whole one side. Uh, so I'm, and, and, you know, this is, this is, here again, it's dark, so you can't really tell the color very good. But keep going, Deb. I think I've got some better light ones. This, you know, down there, and those down there actually, I think, look a little better than ours would because they've got those, they've, they've got those, what do you call them?
Columns.
Yeah, the columns that are darker color. So they've got some contrasting color that, that sort of sets it off and makes it look a little better. But ours is just kinda plain all the way along there and no, nothing to contrast and I, I'm just afraid. I guess my thought is I'm thinking, well, you know, maybe we just have to live with it, but it's kind of a long-term investment and I hate to have something that we look at every day for 20, 30 years and go, you know, well, I guess we just have to live with it. You know, I'd really rather have, I mean, if you've ever been to the Thornton exit, you know, they, they painted that and they've got some nice tan and brown colors, the earth tone colors, and it looks really nice. So I don't know why they didn't go with something more like that. But anyway, I guess my, what I'm, I'm sort of asking your thoughts on, uh, I, we're gonna try to negotiate with them because there are some things, the signage, we think we can maybe go away that is less expensive. So maybe if we can negotiate with them, do some less expensive signage, you know, maybe we don't have to. They, I think they want us to come up with the $50,000 if we want it changed. And I'm like, uh, I'm, I'm, I kinda wanna negotiate that with them a little bit because I feel like they didn't really do their due diligence on. I mean, in the end, I guess it's their project and we don't really have final say over it. But on the other hand, they've done all of these public hearings, you know, public comment things to get people's comments, to get public buy-in. And, and now the public buy-in that we're getting is not good, right, Councilmember Erickson? I don't know if any of you, any of the rest of you have heard any comments or not, but. So I just, I just really hate to say, well, it wasn't our fault. It was ITD's decision because people don't like to hear that, you know?
Mayor, is that shadowing or is that a dark crowd in the middle there?
It's just shadows. Yeah, it's just shadows in there.
Does it delay the opening to repaint it or can they do that while trucks are flowing?
Well, it's, it's open, so I think there may be times like, like now when they have to close one lane if they've got people working along there. Although, although they've got the sidewalk poured and so, I don't know, maybe, well, they'd have to have trucks along there probably. Equipment things. So yeah, they probably would have to close one lane. Don't you think, Justin, they'd probably have to close one lane to redo it? Yeah, so which is a pain.
Do we know if they're planning on painting the two columns on either side of the-
I don't know about that.
That are gray. Because right now they're gray and the whole-
They're not painting any of the columns?
That concrete color.
They're gonna stay that color.
And that's a, they're gonna stay that color?
That's what I gotta tell them.
Because that's, that's a pretty, that's a bit of a clash. I mean, that's not even within the same color wheel.
I die like every day.
Die through it every day?
I've seen it one down in Fort Hall and it's not, I don't mind it because the whole thing is either this color or the trim dark brown. So it kinda sorta works together.
Well, and, and my thought was they painted it that, and this was really my thought, whether it's, makes sense or not. But I thought they painted that because of the casino, you know, and they were, and their idea was, you know, the gold of, people go there and, and, and they get their gold or whatever, but.
Maybe they ordered too much and they gotta paint it somewhere.
Yeah, maybe. That's what I'm wondering. But I don't know. I guess my thoughts in bringing this up is just to get your thoughts and, yes, Justin.
So they, it's not just those walls on the side. They're, they're also, you know, Fort, Fort Hills walls going down the middle of the road, there will all be that same color. So that color's gonna be all over the place.
All over the place. With no contrasting colors, that's kind of the bad part. If, if there were some, what's that?
And the other one too?
Yeah, well, I, I think that's what they had planned on doing, both of them. Yeah, so.
They might change on the center one before they paint it.
And I guess the other option is to say, well, go in and just sandblast that off and, and just leave it gray. And that could be another option, but I don't know if that would look very good once. I don't know if they can sandblast every little bit of it off and, yes.
The, uh, the anti-graffiti is, is not coloring.
Wish you but, sorry.
The anti-graffiti is not the coloring. The coloring is, the pigment is chosen and added to the paint. And so you can get any color you want within, within a spectrum. The, the, there's a lot of options. One of them is a clear coat. Uh, we could have just gone over the top of the existing concrete, but we didn't.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, this, this one, when we went out and met with them yesterday, they have to sandblast it, what's been painted already, and then they come over with the primer and then paint it with another color. And they said, it's not really a tried thing either. I mean, the new color may peel off.
Really?
They're not guaranteeing that the new color will stick even after they go through all of that.
The primer was a much better color than the paint.
It's ugly.
It's ugly.
Well, I've had comments about it too.
Like, I don't wanna say this many, but they call it.
And I guess one thought would be to continue with this color on that one and have them do a different color on the middle one, which might make things worse if people are like, well, why didn't you paint them both the good color?
It's ugly, don't we still match it?
I don't know. I mean, what, what are your thoughts?
Maybe we oughta have you, see if we negotiate with them.
Should we just continue negotiations and see what we can get? I guess the unknown, the bad thing is what Stephen mentioned, the unknowns of sandblasting it off and seeing if a new color will stick very well. But I would imagine over time, if it came off, you know, it would weather and you might have to sandblast it off again. And at that point in time, a new coat might stick better because of the weathering and all that kind of thing, but. I don't know. It's a, it's not a great situation to be in. I just, I just really wish they would have asked us a little bit more before they painted it out. But that's what under the bridge, so we'll just have to go from here on it.
So, uh, my opinion, I, I would not have chosen that color certainly. It's, to me, it's just not, it's not, it's not good. But anyway, where we're at right now is I don't, I don't wanna have a two-week delay. I'm sorry, but when that two, that two weeks comes in a very critical time, which-
That, that was kind of my thing. I was saying, I think the delay is worse than the $50,000.
Absolutely.
I just, I, if, if it comes down to it, I would, I would suggest we just-
Just leave.
Go with it and, and you have, change it on the middle, on this, on the next exit certainly, to a more palatable color. But, but I don't, I sure don't like the idea of waiting two weeks.
I wonder if, I wonder if we could get them to just sandblast off the top, that little top strip, and paint that a complementary color like the one down there, just to try to make it look a little nicer. Maybe that would make a difference or, or something like that, you know, and then, and then on the other side, they could, you know, they don't have to sandblast that side because only the one side is done. They could just do that on the other side and try to make it look a little nicer. But I, I don't know. What are your, do you think we should just go with it and, yes?
I'm a little, I'm a little nervous on, as they paint all those other walls, all those other three walls throughout the whole thing, that's gonna add a lot more of this color. I like your idea. Negotiate that top, change the top.
And maybe paint those other things a complementary color.
The top, so it kinda blends it all together. Leave the bottom. See if we can do that, but I, I agree with Eric that if you push us back two or three weeks, you're gonna go right into the college color.
Yeah, I know. That's, that's not gonna be good. Of course, hopefully we would have the middle, will, will the middle exit be open by then? So that would, so that would help.
The middle exit was open two weeks ago. Fully open two weeks ago on their schedule.
Right.
The, they're, they're running a little behind already, so they're looking for reasons to blame us for these delays.
Oh.
One option that you haven't discussed and that I'm not sure how ITD would respond, but you simply say, leave this as it is, do the right thing on everything else. Don't worry about taking this off right now. Because taking it off now and taking it off next spring or next fall probably doesn't change the price significantly and we get to then negotiate a little more on can we dress, can we put lipstick on this pig? Or at, at the very least, do we, you know, avoid doing the bad?
They could, you know, they don't have to sandblast that side cause only the one side is done, they could just do that on the other side and try to make it look a little nicer. But I, I don't know, what are your, do you think we should just go with it and, yes?
I'm a little nervous on, as they paint all those other walls, all those other three fo- walls throughout the whole thing. That's gonna add a lot more of this color, I like your idea, negotiate that top, change the top.
And maybe paint those other things a complimentary color.
The top, so it kinda blends it all together, leave the bottom, see if we can do that, but I, I agree with, uh, Eric that. If you push us back two or three weeks, you're gonna go right into the college color.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's not gonna be good, of course, hopefully we would have the middle, will, will the middle exit be open by then? So that would, so that would help.
Was open two weeks ago, fully open two weeks ago on their schedule.
Right.
The, uh, they're, they're running a little behind already, so they're looking for reasons to blame us for these delays.
Oh.
One option that you haven't discussed and that I'm not sure how ITD would respond, but you simply say. Leave this as it is, do the right thing on everything else, don't worry about taking this off right now. Because taking it off now and taking it off next spring or next fall probably doesn't change the price significantly. And we get to then negotiate a little more on, can we dress, can we put lipstick on this pig? Or at, at the very least, do we, you know, avoid doing the bad?
So you're saying leave this and, and, and do something different on the other side or just go?
Do everything else, three-foot walls, south part of this interchange, the middle, the Main Street interchange.
So you're saying do a different color on the other side?
Yeah, and, and then you, you can come back.
And fix that.
When, the next seven-week break.
And, and, and we can always, we can always take public comment on which color they like the best.
And they can test drive the graffiti, the anti-graffiti nature by spray painting something like brought to you by ITD.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I was wondering about that, if, does anybody know how good that is? I mean, do they have to take a pressure washer to it? To get anything that you put over it off?
Then you can just brush it off.
Just brush it off?
It's a, it's a soap, yeah, it comes, they claim it, comes off pretty well.
Okay, cause I was thinking, hey, this is the entrance to the high school.
Yeah.
Turn that ugly thing over to the high school art department and let them paint mural after mural after mural once it washes off. And I'm not, I'm not kidding.
Until they dry clean it, I suspect, but I don't believe that ITD is going to give it over to us.
Okay, oh, so we couldn't, we could never, okay, cause that'd be fun, homecoming, we could put all the jersey numbers on there, some memes and senior night.
My, my thought would be, take what we've got, don't delay anything, change what hasn't been done. Which may only result in a small delay of ordering a different paint from Sherwin-Williams.
We were, they, I asked yesterday, they have not ordered the paint, they have not made the rest of the paint yet.
Oh, that's nice.
The only delay then would be. Healing the question, the delay caused by all the phone calls we take. And, and some of the very graphic comments that are coming into City Hall relative to this color. None of them, none of them have been friendly, all of them, most of them have been fecal related.
That's, that's unfortunate, um, of course, maybe we can, we do have plans to do some planting above the wall, maybe we can put. Enough growth over the wall that we can kind of cover it up. I, I can work on that, okay, and maybe some greenery hanging over it, it'll look nice with greenery hanging over it, so, we'll see.
Well, I never noticed it and I drive it every day, so at least there's like a few people out there who don't notice anything, so they're not mad.
Now that you've seen it, do you?
If you had pointed it out, I never would've noticed.
Tomorrow morning when you drive through.
Tonight when I go home.
Right, yeah, take a look and see what's. Okay, alright, okay, I think that's, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll move forward with some negotiations on that. Uh, I believe that is all I had, uh, as far as, oh, yeah, as far as, um.
Yeah.
Mayor's business, so let's move on to item number nine, which is nine A is the planning and zoning recommendation to approve a comprehensive plan map. Amendment from low and intermediate residential to commercial at approximately two fifty North, twelfth West and ten twenty-two West Main Street. This will be designated as resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ten if the motion passes, Mr. Parkinson, tell us about this.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you, uh, this is a proper, the Erickson property located west side of Highway twenty. On the north side of Main Street, right there, uh, twelfth West is just to the west of it there. You've already approved two parcels for Mr. Latham on his parcel of it, now he wants to bring the rest of that in. He was also joined by Mr. Holmes, who owns the property right next to the trailer court, and he also wants to bring his into it. At this point, first thing we would ask for, there needs to be a change in the comprehensive plan. Um, we have low residential and Mr. Holmes and we have, I think, commercial, we're only changing Holmes, I think, on the comprehensive. Are we changing both of them?
Both colored comprehensive change?
Yeah, I think they both called for it, yeah, cause we have to switch them both to commercial. So this will bring it all into the same, and that will basically bring this whole area in almost to the same, um, commercial entity.
It's all going to commercial, okay.
We have one island that is not part of the city yet that is still tag, uh, we have visited with them and at this point they have not joined in. I know there's some negotiating going on between parties, so we've just kind of left that alone until they reach a consensus on what they want to do. So in front of you would be just those two parcels right there, the remaining parcel of Erickson's and then all of Jim Holmes. To change comprehensive to commercial.
Right, right, then.
Zoning just recommended it to you for approval.
Okay, thank you, is there a, a motion to move forward on resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ten? As stated.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers, any further discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion passes. Item number B is the planning zoning recommendation to approve a rezone from transitional ag and mixed use, and mixed use. To community business center zone at two fifty North, twelfth West and ten twenty-two West Main. This will be designated ordinance number thirteen seventeen and considered first read if the motion passes. So this is a rezone, uh, is this the same piece?
Same pieces, Mr. Holmes' is zoned tag at the current time and Mr. Latham's is, uh, mixed use. Both of them want to go to the CBC, Community Business Center.
Alright, so the first one was a comprehensive plan adjustment, this one is a rezone, so is there, uh, is there a motion to move forward on ordinance number thirteen seventeen?
Mayor, I'll make that motion forward. A question?
We'll have questions, we'll have questions, uh, so there's a motion on the table, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson, now, is there any questions or comments on this item?
Well, just a question, and I know we're not supposed to, you know, discuss the, we, we're just trying to, just to determine the, the. If this is a good fit for the community, but that's a lot of property, that's a lot of area. And, um, this, do we know, does he have plans, does he have something in mind?
Both of them have things in mind, Mr. Latham is negotiating with multiple parties right now, he hasn't shared with us what they are. He just says, I have multiple, and right now, he says residential is almost dead in the water. And so a lot of the commercial is now wanting to come into the city, and that's why he started doing them, but as he did one piece. Others came in and says, well, I may wanna do something in the back part of this, and so that's why he's come in and asked that. Mr. Holmes had discussed an option with me and it would've required Community Business Center also.
Is the Latham property the one that's right against the highway?
The Highway twenty, uh, Jim Holmes, it's, it's the family estate, but it's eighteen acres right out there, yeah.
And then is that doctor's office complex right there on the corner across from Mother Hibbert's, is that not in the city?
No, that's in the city.
In the city and it, what is it zoned as?
Uh, Dr. Fulmer's is.
I think it's already CBC, right?
And then we just changed two lots next to him to CBC, the rest of that is mixed use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, the next step would be for a developer to bring a, uh, plot plan, right?
Plat.
Plat, a plat, and we would have the opportunity to review that.
Correct.
And, and, and voice our concerns or, or issues there.
Yes, all of that would come before you, this is an area also, Justin may be able to answer it better. It's gonna need some master plan sewer work for that whole thing to function, so this is gonna take a little bit more than just a plat. And so Keith has indicated, if we get this further back in, it's gonna take a new lift station. Punching into the existing system, probably a whole new line back to the plant, so it's gonna take some significant work to get to that point.
Okay, which the developers would be responsible to pay for?
For the majority of it, any upsizing would be ours.
Yeah, for the majority.
My only concern is from a, from a planning standpoint, when you look at the city, you know, you've got, you've got a lot of commercial to the north. You've got a lot of commercial to the south, and now you've got a lot of commercial to the west. Um. It'll take a lot of commercial to, to, to build all that out, you know what I mean? And where does it, where does it light, where does it light when it, when it all kind of comes out?
You know, one thing that could happen, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there, it may not, or it might, is. You know, they, they may put some commercial in some of it and then. Maybe housing perks up again and they come back in and say, hey, we'd like to rezone part of this for some housing. I mean, you know, there's a lot of different things, um, personally, I, I kinda like having the commercial spread out into different zones. Because it spreads the traffic out a little and, uh, just my, personally, living out that way, it's kind of nice. I, I like having like Valleywide out there that I can run there if I need something instead of having to drive clear over to Walmart or whatever, and so. I think as the city grows, it's nice to have some little commercial nodes in different parts so that people can just go there. And not have to drive into town or, you know, clog up the, the major arteries going to one specific area. So, I mean, I, it's gonna cause more traffic, I mean, every, every bit of growth does cause more traffic, but. You know, I, I think in time, we're gonna have to, we're going to have to convince ITD to move that. That traffic box out there too, so that we can widen that into four lanes instead of the three lanes that it currently is, cause that's a bit of a bottleneck and a problem right there on. Corner of, you know, by Valleywide, I, I think Colin has mentioned that several times.
I was gonna bring that up tonight again, cause that's something that's definitely gonna have to be looked at pretty fast on that corner, cause. Going down to three lane, it's gonna pile up big time right there as this, if this develops out.
I think, I think that's one of the things we need to have on our list of things of, of concern for ITD and, and the other one that I'm concerned about. Even as we speak and they're building it is out there on that north exit, I, I, for the life of me, I can't figure out why. They're not requiring a free right coming off of the freeway because we've got a road going right there and now it just ends, it's kind of like. People are gonna say, why did you build a road to nowhere, you know, instead of having something that connects to it. They are gonna have a right turn lane there, but it's, still looks goofy because you've got a, a, a big lane going right up there and, and that it just ends, so. It's, uh, it's just weird that, that they're not looking at doing that while they're doing it to me, and I think we need to have that conversation too. And I, I know Keith has had it with them several times, but.
Discussing this more with them to, to do some more widening and put a curb around there to try to get it.
Okay, is that discussion going anywhere with them? The last I heard, they were just talking about.
Waiting for pricing from the contractor.
Okay.
Because we had it in the, Urban Renewal had it in the budget to pay for some of that around that, 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 over there.
Okay, alright, well, we need to have those discussions, cause as I look at that, I'm just like, you know, that's one of the things people are gonna say. Aren't you guys working together and getting stuff done the right, you know, getting it done right the first time instead of saying, oh, well, we'll deal with that later, but.
To clarify, that weird lane was a mistake made by the contractor, they accidentally paved an additional six or eight feet.
Eight feet, right, but it's still, even without that eight feet, you'd still have an empty lane going up there.
Bad decision, but it's not, it was made worse by the accidental paving.
Yeah, I mean, it, it makes it look that much worse, right, yeah, so, anyway. We'll, we'll, we'll assume that that's a deceleration lane for all the people flying in to go to the, to go to the temple, you know, they're probably late, you know, trying to get there, so. We'll have a deceleration lane there.
Put a sign up and have that as a picture-taking spot.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
And take their picture before they go.
Okay, so, anyway, that's.
One other thought on the other one that we're looking at, also looking at that commercial all along Highway twenty. There've been a lot of difficulty putting residential next to the Highway twenty, so by having that Community Business Center along there. Does make it a little easier, uh, cause then eventually if you get to, you can step down further out and you don't have to worry about that being a detriment to.
That, that's kind of my thought, I, I personally, and I think that the commercial will probably built out, build out along the highway, cause that's where commercial likes to be for visibility. But over time, I'm guessing there may be some demand for residential a little further back, you know, some multifamily or something.
They're not gonna go far because you get across twelfth and you're in the slough and you're not gonna be building down in there anyways.
No, yeah.
So that.
No, I mean, just out in that area, yeah.
In there for what they can expand.
And maybe it won't happen, maybe it'll all be commercial, which, you know, that'll be okay too, but, okay, well, any other comments or?
I did have one question, I know you might not be able to answer it because it varies so much, but as a general rule, is it? More traffic for like the medium-density housing and the mixed use or more traffic for commercial?
Commercial.
You're probably gonna have more traffic with the mixed use, cause you've got all the residents living in there, they can go to the thirty units per acre with that. And you put the commercial element, where this one would've just had commercial, it's gonna depend a lot on what type of commercial comes.
Yeah, it depends, because if you.
Walmart would have more.
Right, if you stuck a Winco there.
Winco or something, or Home Depot goes in there, there's gonna be a lot of traffic in there, but if it's something else that's maybe not as high traffic and then you get some residential. Depending on what's in there, if it's doctor's offices and things like that, then the people that live there can just go there to the doctor, so they don't have to drive. You know, and so it kind of depends, there's, there's a dynamic that could make a difference.
But it does help families to have, if, yeah, if you could have something that sells fruits and vegetables and things like that, so they're not just buying a. Mother Hibbert's, you know, forty-four-ouncer, you know, I mean, for real, it helps families.
Oh, yeah, 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 if there's some kind of a.
Get some bananas or carrots or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, bananas and other hibberts.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, they do, actually.
I didn't know.
They don't have much else, but they do have bananas.
And we've already got a motion on the floor, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, there, uh, there is, a motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion or questions about that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, alright, that motion passes, so that is, that, that was item number B, that's ordinance thirteen seventeen, right? So item number C is the planning zoning recommendation to approve an amendment to the Rexburg Development Code, ordinance number twelve hundred. As it pertains to RV park permitted uses for CBC and other substantive and non-substantive items. This will be designated as ordinance number thirteen eighteen, so these are things that are changing from ordinance twelve hundred into this new ordinance. So can you, uh, just kind of go over some of that?
Yeah, and we had three different items we were bringing forward, but when we got to the meeting, uh, because of an issue with our. Their access to the information, they couldn't read it, so we tabled the other two items, cause they were significant in size. And this one, there's only one thing that's happening and that is adding into campgrounds, uh, and RV parks. That they can have a tiny home on wheels in an RV park. And so what they're doing, we've had a request for this and we, we looked at different ways of bringing it forward and it just looked like this is a good way. To put it in a place in the city that we can control it, put it with the CUP, so it would come in front of you guys to make any approval of allowing that to happen. Test this out, see if it works, and then if it does, see if it would be needed to go into any other type of permitted use in other zones. But it would keep those, so they're still on wheels, they could skirt them, but they would still keep them in there and they could easily move them, uh, if they chose to.
So this is, uh, regular rentals, long, long-term rentals and short-term rentals, both?
The only thing you have on there is that last thing, and tiny homes on wheels, additional use permit, that's the only thing that's changing.
Okay.
Just that statement right there.
Okay, any questions about that, yes?
Um, so how many RV parks do we even have in city limits right now? We just have the one, right?
Correct.
And is there any kind of a, like, there's, like, how close together the stalls are?
Yeah, in an RV park, you're gonna look at it simply, it'd be no different than in pulling in your RV, a camp trailer.
Very similar.
They would fit in the same slots and they would, they all have sewer, water, electrical in there, they do them as a plug-in, cause tiny homes on wheels. Can be used like an RV, you just don't move them as often, cause they're not designed to be moved as often. This way they would be, they would be able to stay through their, through the winter, um, as long as they needed to. But they would either charge by the month or whatever they wanted to do and that, we don't regulate that anyways.
Is there a stay limit? Do we regulate the stay limit? They regulate that?
Yes, that's.
I think the building code, actually, in, in answer to your question, the building code, isn't it? Talk about how far apart they have to be and all that kind of thing?
Not with tiny homes on wheels, cause they're rated as an RV.
Oh, okay.
There does have to be a safety.
Safety difference, and they have that.
You can't have them right next to each other.
They're, they're, they're actually spaced wider than our trailer parks right now.
Oh, yeah.
The anticipated experiment will be those park homes that you see out there at the.
Iron Horse.
Iron Horse, yeah.
Put, I think sixteen.
Yeah, and they just wanna put them. ...in the end of their RV park and set them up for, uh, low-income housing, basically. Yeah.
Which is probably good.
Alan, the... So there is regulation on how close they are?
Yeah, there's...
In the future, if someone come in here and...
The fire code requires that there be a separation between the, any type of RV and exactly...
Oh, the fire code, yeah.
A slightly...
I was thinking building code.
You can build two homes within ten feet of each other. Maybe this requires twelve feet. But most of those are like fifteen to twenty feet apart right now.
Yeah, they're pretty good, yes.
Sorry, I have another question. So, um, is there any kind of, you know, okay, I'm sorry, I just have a question. So sex offenders, you know, they can't live within a certain radius of a school and we have a way to track that? So with some...
That would come back to the police and everything, because they have to register as sex offenders anyway.
So, but do we have any way to track them when they're in something like this?
If they're long-term, it's the same as ranking in the park department. If it's short-term, we don't. Which we wouldn't have with an RV if they...
Yeah, well, that's a criticism I've heard is, um, how close it is to schools. Um, I've, I've been approached by parents with that concern.
Sure.
So it's a concern I have, is that it's pretty close to schools and we have no way to regulate who's there as we would.
We don't have anything in the code other than police, what they can do for a registered sex offender that comes in the city. This RV park, by the way, is not too close to a school. No.
Yeah, I know, it's not even within the radius. I know. It's just, it, it got me thinking when a few of my neighbors approached me about that, so...
Probably from that perspective, it's in a pretty good spot, because it's quite a ways away from all the schools. So, anyway, but yeah. Okay.
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes?
Alan, the conditional use permit, is that for the tiny home on wheels only?
What's that?
The conditional use permit, was that for the tiny homes on wheels only?
Yes, just for the tiny homes.
But campgrounds are RV campsites and would also need it.
They have to have approval by you anyways. They have, they require a CUP too.
Oh, so the CUP is for everything?
It's just added to tiny homes in that.
So the CUP is for everything?
Yeah, because we did it with that existing one, you guys had to approve that under a conditional use.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Are we satisfied? All right, then I, I would entertain a motion to move forward on item, on ordinance number thirteen eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we, uh, pass Rexburg Ordinance number thirteen eighteen as, as stated.
All right, and consider it first read, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Or carries. Thank you, Alan, appreciate that information. All right, item number D is a staff recommendation to approve the City of Rexburg's Title Six Non-Discrimination Policy. This is designated as Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven. If the motion passes, Mr. Zollinger, do you have any, uh, commentary on this item?
Yes, I do. This is Deborah's responsibility, and she put my name on this agenda.
Oh, all right, well, we won't ask you to push your button then for that.
I did warn him that he could talk tonight.
All right. Deborah, did you, do you have any, uh, anything that you need to let us know on this?
So basically, this is the City of Rexburg's, uh, non-discrimination policy that is required by law. Uh, we need to have this because, well, it's a good thing for one, but, um, to get any federal funding, grants, that type of, you have to have this in place. And so this is the first of two, um, our non-discrimination policy statement for the City of Rexburg. Uh, the next is, uh, how to handle, uh, our complaints, so...
Okay.
And then the, uh, policy is in your packet as well, if you want to take, uh, the plan. We've got, uh, the complaint form in here. Uh, this DOT statement is, you know, that's, it's just basically from the Department of Transportation, Federal Department of Transportation. Everybody has to have that included in the document, but this one is our, the city's plan, which you can review.
In, in years past, you have passed this resolution in conjunction with the federal applications that come through with AlTura, but we have not been nearly as vigilant at maintaining our end of the promises as we will be now that Deborah is in charge.
Yes, so we have to have, uh, we have to have a whole, uh, section on our website and have access for the public to submit these, these, uh, complaints if, if needed or if you have these policies.
Okay, so, so these two items are basically related, Title eleven and twelve, a non-discrimination policy and a discrimination complaint procedure. So we can probably, can we move forward on these jointly? Okay. And I would entertain a motion to, well, is there any questions or comments about these before we move forward?
So the only real change is, is the complaint procedure, is that correct?
Right, so, so...
Formalized it.
Yes.
Yeah, the formalization of the complaint procedure.
Prior to Deborah, Claire Kay managed this and it was managed, uh, internally by him. We've never had a complaint. We have started to have a lot more concern. Uh, we do have a lot more requests. They haven't been complaints yet, but they are requests for accommodations in some of our public pro, programs, and we've given it to each of the department heads that have those programs to manage them. Uh, we do anticipate that with the growth in the number of program participants that need accommodations, we may reach a point where we have complaints.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to, uh, to pass Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven and dash twelve. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-four eleven and twenty twenty-four twelve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, ma'am.
Seconded by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes. And we will move on to item number ten, which is a second reading. This would be ordinance number thirteen sixteen, the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget appropriation ordinance that we passed last time, that we first read. Uh, is there any questions on this before we move forward or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance thirteen sixteen second read.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Chambers. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Councilmember David Reeser. Thank you. Is, uh, is there any questions about this? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, we have no third readings. Item number eleven is the consent calendar, which includes items, um, from the minutes from the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four council meeting and the approval of paying the City of Rexburg bills, which Council President Walker has gone through and signed off on. Um, any questions or comments about the minutes or the bills? Hearing none? All in favor? Or, sorry, sorry. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Colin Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will approve those minutes and pay the bills. All right, uh, the only other item I would ask, is anybody aware? I did have a lady call me and she will, she and another, her, one of her partners from the Daughters of the, uh, of the, uh, Daughters of the Revolution, something Revolution, American Revolution, Daughters of the American Revolution. Um, I was thinking the French Revolution there for a minute, but, um, anyway, uh, they want to, we will read a, a, uh, a deal, it's Constitution Day on September seventeenth, and we will, they've asked us to read a, what do we call it, proclamation on the council meeting before that, but, uh, one of the things that, that they do in a lot of cities is they actually kind of, in, in representation of the bell in Philadelphia, they ring a bell in a lot of cities at a certain time on September seventeenth. Does anyone know of a bell in Rexburg? I thought that might be kind of fun to, uh, huh?
They got the little bell out front of their...
Oh, well, that might be the best we have, because we don't, I don't think the county has a bell. I should ask them, but they don't have one over there at the county building.
They still has their Glockenspiel or whatever they call it.
YUID.
Yeah, the Glockenspiel.
Who, who?
BYUID.
Oh.
Those aren't real bells though, right?
No.
They're just speakers, but they, yeah, I've, I've heard them, I remember as a kid.
Oh, oh, the bells that they used to chime?
They used to play.
Yeah. That might be a thought too. Anyway, okay, yeah, that's, that's a thought. I just thought it might be kind of fun to, uh, to join in on that and talk about the Constitution, since our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary is coming up in two years, I believe, so, did you have something?
Yes, I was down to Eagle Park today and we've taken, the fire department went in there and got all that brush. We have any plans of getting that shipped out?
No.
Because we had the big fire.
Yes, we do. In fact, uh, yeah, we, I'm glad you brought that up, because we, we had gotten a bid and it was really high, and so we were going to hire a couple of young men and take our chipper that we have and go in there and start chipping it. But then we contacted Wilcox's again, who did the chipping of the county thing, and they gave us a much more reasonable bid. And, and Chief Childs said he thinks we can use some of the money from the grant that we had to clear out to pay for about half the cost of chipping it. So it'll cost us, instead of thirty-four thousand that we thought it was going to cost or more, it's more like fifteen thousand max, and we can use about half of that, uh, grant money to pay about half of that, so it's only going to cost us seventy-five hundred. So they're going to start on that on Monday, they're going to chip it up, and, uh, we're, we're hoping to get some of the chips to use for some of our parks, things that we need. Uh, and we also have those two young men that, that were, um, going to do the chipping are, we've outfitted them with a sprayer to go down and spray weeds, and today they were out spraying weeds over there in Eagle Park, because there's just weeds that are just taking things over. And so there, I went down there with them and we looked at the different kind of weeds that we want to spray and all that kind of thing. So they're going to be working for the next week or so, just spraying weeds constantly so that we can try to get that under control and looking better.
And then the wood down there, they cut, what we're doing with that, is that just going to be down there for people to use?
Uh, people can use it. Uh, we've had some people who needed firewood come in and we've given it to them, and so if, if you know anybody who is in desperate need of firewood, uh, you know, we could probably work out something where they could come in. It'd be really nice if they, maybe they'd do a little bit of a service project or something to, you know, to trade for it or whatever, uh, but we won't necessarily require that. So, um, that's kind of the plan there. We hope to leave some of it there just for campers to use when they're down there too, but...
Okay, that's all I have.